Thank you, everyone, for coming in. Sorry for the slow start. We're going to call this meeting to order at 12:17. Do I have a motion from the committee to, or the commission, to adopt the agenda? Amanda or Lorna?
I'll make a motion.
Adopt it.
Could I have, has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes from our last meeting on June 12th? Hopefully so. Do I have a motion to adopt that? Laura, Amanda?
I'll, I'll motion for that.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to our delegation, Russo delegation.
Hi, thank you for hosting us today. I'm just for clarification, I know that these meetings have been recorded and then posted to your YouTube channel. Is that something that's happening today, just so that we have reference of this in the, in the future? So I've just, and I'm, I'm asking because it's sometimes difficult to assemble as many people as we have assembled from our delegate today, just given scheduling and summertime and vacations and all of that. So what I'm wondering is, is because of the material that we're going to be sharing today, we're hoping that it could potentially be reviewed by the board at their, at their leisure and not have us to have all come back in again to present in front of the board.
Yes, we can do that.
Wonderful. Okay. So, so we're, we're assuming that we're being recorded. Are we being recorded so that people, no, nobody can see our face right now? Are there cameras anywhere or?
There are cameras. They're kind of just located like around here. So.
Okay.
You're a little cut off from it, but that's okay. We can still kind of, we can still hear you, so.
All right. Okay, so I guess the first question that I would like to ask is when, Chris, I was reviewing your orientation presentation to the newly formed Area F APC, and I believe it was in February, February 2nd of this year, is that correct?
John, it's not really a question and answer session, right? So you're here to present to the APC your proposal, and we're here as a resource to answer questions that the APC might have.
Okay.
So the floor is yours, but I would encourage you to explain to the APC why you feel this is a good idea.
Okay. So the, just from a hierarchy of documents perspective, the Regional Growth Strategy Bylaw, I believe, is the, the highest document that you guys have in your list of documents. From there, it goes to the respective areas and their OCPs, I believe, and then any other further documents, I guess underneath that. And so if I'm, I'm looking at Policy 1C-4 of the Regional Growth Strategy Bylaw, the highest in your hierarchy, and it says, "Limiting consideration of rezoning of large land parcels to smaller land parcels outside of primary growth areas and rural growth areas only where such growth is infill, does not significantly increase the number of units or the established density, and respects the character of its surroundings." Now, we, we feel that after much research, that, that this is the, the policy within the Regional Growth Strategy Bylaw, which best represents what it is we're trying to do. And we feel as though that there should be provisions for rezoning and subdividing lands outside of primary and rural growth areas due to the fact that not everybody wants to live in town or, or, you know, other people, people might want to have acreage, they might want to have a horse, they might want to live outside of those bounds. Now, I haven't had anybody within the organization acknowledge this statement or this, this, this part of the Regional Growth Strategy Bylaw. Instead, they have, they have cited the policies which are directly before and after this, which says discourage rezoning of large rural land parcels to smaller land parcels outside of primary growth areas. And it seems like that's the, that's the statement that we're sticking with, and that's what we're going to do. Whereas the statement directly below that says, "Limit the consideration of it." And we really feel as though that, that our application has not even been considered for this. It, it seems as though that the response that we got back from the planning department was, um, had not taken into account all of the, the due diligence that we had done in the form of our hydrogeological study from John Finell, who's sitting right next to me, in, in the form of our wastewater and onsite wastewater practitioner report that Rick Evans did, who was unfortunately unable to be here today, and also our environmental assessment. Every single one of these three reports that we, we, we have done for this rezoning application came back with the exact same finding of zero to no impact on the surrounding area. And we haven't had anybody inside of the planning department acknowledge this. Furthermore to that, if we are looking at 1C-4 of the Regional Growth Strategy Bylaw, it, it states that some of the provisions for consideration of rezoning of larger parcels is, "Does not significantly increase the number of units." Ours does not. The growth is infill, which we believe it is, and it respects the character of its surroundings. We are in a very sparsely populated area of the outskirts of Summerland, and we are directly adjacent to quite a, I don't want to say a dense area, but when you pan out of the map, the density looks substantial. And our lots meet the minimum parcel size for our, the zoning that we're asking. So I, I would like to introduce a human element to this and some of the professionals that we're working with. As I mentioned, John Finell, who is 30 years in the industry, signing off and making recommendations on applications just like this. One of my investment partners, who is my uncle, Paul Russo, who is 25 years at Caterpillar Machinery, one of the largest companies on earth, working as a mechanical engineer. This is Michael Pellegrino. He's a master plumber gas fitter who's going to be in conjunction with John Finell, installing and helping to design our water purification system for all of the wells. This is Ian Goth, who is and has for the last 25 years worked in the largest industry on our planet, oil and gas all over the world. He's designing our electrical system for this development. We've worked with all of these professionals for a very long time. We all have young families in town. We are the type of professionals that you need in your community to make sure that your infrastructure runs smoothly. If you by incrementally rejecting these proposals, if you incrementally reject these proposals, you will see brain drain in your community. We will move to other markets and find other opportunities, and it will be increasingly difficult for you to meet a couple of objectives. One, the housing supply, which is in crisis in our province and in our country. And two, our skilled labor shortage. We have a massive skilled labor shortage, which is only going to be further exacerbated by the retirement of the baby boomers. You're going to need young families in your community to step into these roles. And if they don't have housing, if they can't live on acreage, if they can't live the lifestyle that they want to live, they're going to move elsewhere and you're going to lose them. And that might not have an effect on your mandate, but down the road, it'll have an effect, and it'll be cumulative, and it'll hurt you. I'd like to pass off to one of our delegates, John Finell, who has spent an incredible amount of time on our groundwater reports to fill in some of the blanks, because I believe that the number one concern from the planning department, as well as our director, is water scarcity in the area. And we really feel this to be an over-exaggerated problem, being that we are on the second largest tributary of water in the Okanagan Basin. I'll pass it over to John Finell.
Thank you, council members. My name is John Finell. I'm a professional geologist, hydrogeologist, and water resource specialist. I have a few more years, 35 years experience. I'm licensed to practice in the province here, the permit to practice, and a member in good standing with the Engineers in Geoscience BC. So Mr. Russo here hired me to, to do an assessment, a water, a water assessment in, in the area. This was part of a request by the Ministry of Transport and Infrastructure, I believe, and a requirement under the, the RDOs application. So I, I commenced to have a review of the, of the water in the, in the area, the Falder Creek area, and came to the conclusion that there was a, a bit of a misunderstanding as to where Mr. Russo's property is with respect to where the concern for water is. As you know, the Falder community is, is supported by groundwater. It's on the Meadow Valley aquifer. That aquifer system is basically in the valley bottom where the community lies, and there's, there's two community wells there now. I think there was a concern back in the, in the, in and around 2010 or so that, that the community was running out of water, that the water levels in the aquifer were going down, which was actually the fact. But that was mitigated later on by putting in a second community well that accessed a deeper portion of the aquifer. And a, and a report by Associated Engineering basically stated at the end that there's, there's, there's no more concern at this time with respect to, you know, supply of water in the Falder community. Now, what's really interesting is most of the attention is focused on the Meadow Valley aquifer. Mr. Russo's property is not anywhere near the Meadow Valley aquifer. He's, he's actually to the west of it and in the bedrock aquifer, which is a totally different aquifer system. And so there, these, these two things are not intimately connected. And so water supply that would be servicing subdivision lots on the Russo property is not accessing water from the Meadow Valley aquifer. And I, I don't know if people really understand that. So in establishing these lots, these three lots, which would require a well each, I did an assessment to look at, okay, if water's going to be used for domestic purposes to support household use, what kind of effect would that have? Now, we do all kinds of calculations. We can look at area of influence and drawdown cones and, and things of that nature. Now, remember, these are household properties, right? Under, under the, the existing bylaws, you need to prove up to 2,300 liters a day of water, or 2.3 cubic meters of water. A household does not use that. I mean, how, the average person in BC uses about 270 liters per person per day. So if you have four people in the house, let's say maybe you're going to use a cubic meter. And remember, if you're familiar with how these well systems work, you have a well, you have a pump in the well, you have a pressure tank, and it services the house and it keeps it under pressure. These turn on and off. So when I did my calculations, I'm, this is with wells that are operating 24/7, 365 days a, a year. That doesn't happen in a household, because you're sleeping at night, the well turns off, your well recovers. So the, the drawdown in the well is going to be less than what I've actually predicted. So this is very conservative. The area of drawdown around a particular well that would be operating constantly for household use is less than 50 meters. There's no one within 50 meters of, of Mr. Russo's proposed properties. And there, and, and these wells would be appropriately spaced, so they're not interfering with each other. And so in designing this type of system, there's minimal to negligible effect. Certainly, the Meadow Valley aquifer shouldn't even be coming into this conversation, because it's a totally different aquifer system. And so the report that's been filed and is on the RDOs site, I don't know if anybody's actually read it. I would hope they would have, because, you know, there's some insightful information in there as to, you know, why this is not a, shouldn't be a concern as far as establishing new residential properties in, in this area.
And if I'm, if I may add something to what John is saying, the, the way the property is currently zoned with the resource area zoning, we are able to have one primary residence, and because of the size of our, our property being 11.8 hectares, we can have up to two secondary residences as well today. And they can all be on their own domestic wells with their own septic systems, and we don't have to ask anybody permission for that. We can just do that today. So it, it seems odd to us that, given the fact that from a domestic perspective, we're able to access this water without anybody's approval right now anyway, because it would be for domestic use. We don't need a water license with the Ministry of Forests for that. We can just, is that, John, can you please speak to that? We.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there's, there is a statutory right that people have to, to water before, prior to licensing. For domestic use, this, this, you know, Mr. Russo falls under that statutory right, so there's, there's no concern there.
And another thing that we would like to point out in this is, is I think that there is a misconception that, that domestic water use is one of those things like the Nestle truck backing up to the property and sucking the water out of the ground, and then it, like, just disappears from the water system entirely. And that's not what these systems do. And when water comes into the home, we use it to bathe, we drink, we drink it. It goes right back into the septic field, and then it goes right back into the water table. So there, we do lose about 20 to 25% in evaporation, but the majority of the water that is, that is used for this purpose goes back into the water system. So there, there being a water concern seems a little bit misinformed. Can you speak to that, please, John?
Certainly. I'd, like, I'll reiterate, the, the report that Associated Engineering put forward after the second community well was put in, basically indicated that, that had alleviated the concern for the, for the drawdown in the Meadow Valley aquifer. With respect to the, the bedrock aquifer, which Mr. Russo's property will be accessing, again, I reiterate that that's, that's not a connect, that's not directly connected to the Meadow Valley aquifer. In the report, it basically indicates that. I've looked at that from a physical perspective, I've looked at it from a geochemical perspective, and, and they are truly different aquifer systems. They may be weakly connected, but again, the, any amount of drawdown that would come out of a residential well, I, I can't even fathom that it would have an impact on the, on the Meadow Valley aquifer or the Trog Creek or, or any of those water systems. It's just, it's such a minuscule amount of water that, that's being used. And let's remember, this is a shared resource. I, I think people need to get access to water to, to, you know, sustain their day-to-day needs. And, and certainly that's under the Act, and if it's used responsibly, I don't see why that would even be an issue. So I, I don't know what more there is to say about this. I, I just wish that people would stop talking about the Meadow Valley aquifer with respect to this application, because it doesn't even apply.
I guess one of our other concerns about this is, you know, we are in the middle of, as I have mentioned previously, a nationwide housing shortage and skilled labor shortage. I, I guess what I'm wondering is, is if, given the amount of due diligence that we've done on this report and everything that John's laid out in his report, how could it not be that we would be against supporting the, the, an improved housing supply and skilled labor opportunities? And I guess to that point, I would like to pass over to the person that's going to be helping install and design our water purification system, Mike Pellegrino, if you have anything to add to what we're discussing today.
Oh, yes.
Here we go. There we go. It's much better. So not only would I be doing the plumbing and heating on the Russo properties, my family and I are and have been looking to buy a piece of rural, rural property within, you know, 10, 15 minutes of Summerland. And, you know, those properties we're, we're quite interested in, especially my wife there, few and far between out there. So when we moved up here originally, that was our intention, was to get on some, a decent-sized property and live out our, our days there and potentially build a home. Me and John have been discussing that matter significantly since I met him. And this has been one of the, the bigger issues. I've been kind of waiting for, hopefully, this to go through, because it's exactly where we'd, we'd like to be, and, and there's just nothing available. I, I mean, we've been looking, basically, you have to buy something that already has a house on it, and you have to pay, you know, quite a bit of money for that, which wouldn't allow us to actually fulfill our dream, which is to build our dream house. So as far as, you know, there being a need for a subdivision, there's definitely a need for my family, and I've spoken to a lot of other young families. We're also saying that, yeah, there's just nothing available for meeting the requirements of, of our wives and our, and our children. So I just don't see how or, or why, why. I mean, when I take a look at the area of Falder, I, I don't see very many new homes being built out there. John, do you know how many new homes have been built out in Fal, Falder roughly over the last 10 years?
Excuse me, this is, this is about an application. I, I know you have a, a great story, but I'd like to concentrate on your application and.
Absolutely, but I, I'm just trying to display the need for.
We understand that.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm, I'm just trying to, to display that there is a need and there is a call for these types of property.
We understand that. Is there anything else?
Yes. To, to that need question in the administrative report that was posted to the website, I believe it was last week Tuesday, there, there was the question of need, whether or not the applicant had provided enough evidence of need for this. And I guess what I'm wondering is, is what does that, what does need look like if not the people that are sitting in this room right now? How, how else could we make it look like we need this? And I guess Ian, looks like he has something that he might want to add.
Hi, my name is Ian Goth. I'm a lifetime Okanagan resident. I'm a local tradesperson, and we appreciate you taking the time to, to sit down and, and hear us out regarding Mr. Russo's application. Projects like this, I think, are unique and important to the overall growth in our immediate area. Small, large, small, non-compact developments such as what is being proposed provide a unique opportunity for certain types of families to, to grow and find residence in the Okanagan that I don't feel is part of the current overall scope that we're seeing that's driving construction and, and growth at current. There's a lot of focus and need for high-density, multifamily developments. And I don't, I don't feel that there's enough focus at the moment on larger rural opportunities that are available that, when subject to the appropriate diligence that has been put forward here, can provide a opportunity and springboard to facilitate other focuses that council may be more, more concerned with developing at the moment. The value of growth in our rural areas, controlled growth in our rural areas, is, is quite high, and it really, really supports the growth that we need to maintain and search out in the more densely occupied areas of town. And without consideration and expansion of the more rural areas, certain opportunities and types of entrepreneurs, families, units that want to grow or come to the Okanagan and grow might not have the, the resources or type of, of lifestyle opportunity that they're looking for in order to bring their businesses to our area in order to support the larger growth picture, the more dense, and, and address the, the challenges of, of population density housing growth. So I think it's important that we realize that low-density rural growth is as important and can support and facilitate other efforts to increase and facilitate high-density growth as required in the province and, and the country itself. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello to the participants of this hearing. My name is Paul Russo. John is my nephew. I'm a senior design engineer at Caterpillar specializing in hydraulic systems and component design. I've worked with them for 25 years. I was born in Oliver. I high-schooled and collegeed in Kelowna, and it's always been a plan to retire back to the Okanagan where my roots are. Not all retirees want to live in an urban or gated community setting. For me, I personally want a large lot in a rural environment to enjoy the recreation and privacy that that brings. When John approached me on this subdivision plan, I immediately committed to the project. Lot two of this proposal of the, the subdivision will be the build site for my retirement home. I enjoy and respect the outdoors, so this rule setting fits well to my love of hiking, catch-and-release fishing, and mountain biking. My extremely eco-efficient ranch-style house design will blend well with the forest surroundings. Alternate energy systems are currently being explored to reduce my carbon footprint. There's a lot of wind up there, and I want to develop a system that'll harness this. I recently moved to Summerland. I'm renting a house and winding down my current Caterpillar over the next year. I'm starting to focus on my house build and anticipate subdivision approval and a building permit being established immediately. I look to a positive effect, I look at a positive effect to local economy and the people with building material purchases, contracting local skilled trades, and spending my retirement funds in the region. There is clearly a housing shortage in British Columbia that has driven the cost of real estate beyond the means of many young and older Canadians. It is a national and regional shame that has, that has come to this situation. Blocking housing development in an outlying, non-ALR land is extremely op, is, is the exact opposite to what is needed to help alleviate this housing crisis. Please move the subdivision application forward for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also like to call Alan Kidwell. This is my journeyman carpenter of 25 years.
Has this to do with the application?
Yeah. It's to do with the need. I'm a recent transplant to the Okanagan, seven years now, and I, I see it more than a lot of people realize. I got lucky, bought a piece of property, seen that property triple in value just because of this terrible supply.
If, if this isn't about the application, then I think we've heard enough. I guess time that we get on with the meeting, and Shannon, do you have something?
Yes, I do have a presentation.
A matter of perspective, we believe it's relevant to his application. Would he be allowed to continue?
What is the relevance?
If you would listen, you would hear, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to interject. It's, it's not the role of the APC to hear from the public, and I think that's the issue, right? We have one application, one delegate speaking to it, and we've gone beyond the professionals now. And now you're bringing in neighbors and friends to speak to it, which is basically asking the public to present. We never notified the APC as a public venue in which. Yeah, but this has nothing to do with the application. You're down now at the building permit application stage when you're talking about pipe fitting and gas and water and everything else. We, we're not even at that stage yet. You're still at the rezoning stage, right? Not even the subdivision stage.
I guess for me, the biggest thing is to say that Mr. Russo's developing a wonderful place here, and it's really needed. It's, you know, he provides employment for a lot of people, draws people like myself to your community. I bring a wealth of information, not just myself, a group of peers that can help with everything else that goes on, and other people that want to come here and talk to them on a daily basis. And they all go, boy, it's too bad there isn't more of this. Too bad there isn't a place I can buy. There is just nothing for us anymore. It's gone. We need to change this. And that's all we hear, is we need to change this. But all I'm hearing is you don't want to change.
Thank you. It's not that we don't want to change. We agree with everything you said. It's just that this is an application, and we're looking at this single application. We agree with everything you said. It's just that this is an application, and we're looking at this single application. So thanks for your comments, uh, Shannon.
I think, sorry, my name is Ray. I know you guys want to finish, but I want to make sure the, the section and the rule is, is what we're trying to address here in the application. So you guys saying, okay, the problem is the water, the problem is this, we cannot do it because of this. Well, we're here to tell you guys that is a way to make this happen. You just have to review and see. So as a community, I'm not from here, not from Canada, and I would like to see this growing as is presented. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll just go ahead and get started with my presentation. I'll try to move through this a bit quickly, just seeing that time is kind of short right now. Um, all right, so as mentioned, this is an application to amend the zoning and OCP designation of the property under RDOS file number F 2022 dot zero zero six zone. Um, just quickly on the application status, we have had this application since April 2022 and have, uh, worked through some of the early steps, um, including a public information meeting back in October, uh, 2022. Now, the application was, uh, deferred for consideration on March 2nd, 2023 due to the ongoing Falder zoning review, which was, has since been completed as of June 15th, 2023. After this meeting, um, we are hoping to bring this application forward for first and second reading on July 20th, 2023. That is to be confirmed. And then if that receives a successful first and second reading, then a public hearing would be scheduled. A bit about the property itself. This property is located at eight zero zero five Princeton Summerland Road. The existing OCP designation that applies to the property is resource area with a similar zoning, which applies being a resource area as well. The parcel is approximately 11.08 hectares in size, and it is not within a designated growth area under the regional growth strategy. Um, of note, the property is located within the boundaries of the Trout Community Watershed. With respect to the subdivision proposal, the applicant is, uh, proposing to subdivide the subject property into three lots of approximately one, 1.2, and nine hectares. The applicant has submitted a subdivision application with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, who had already issued a preliminary layout review on July 25th, 2022. Now, when we receive, when a subdivision application is submitted to the Ministry of Transportation, the ministry refers the application out to the RDOS, uh, for comments regarding any requirements which, uh, the, the proposal must meet under the applicable zoning bylaw, official community plan bylaw, and subdivision servicing bylaw. In this case, the applicable resource area zoning under the Okanagan Valley zoning bylaw stipulates a minimum parcel size of 20 hectares for subdivision. And similarly, the resource area OCP designation speaks to a minimum, uh, 20 hectare parcel size as well. That being said, as a means of facilitating the proposed three-lot subdivision, the applicant is requesting to amend the OCP designation of the property under the Electoral Area F OCP bylaw from resource area to part small holdings and part large holdings. Uh, similarly, the applicant is proposing to amend the, uh, zoning of the property under the Okanagan Valley zoning bylaw from resource area to part small holdings three and part large holdings one. So looking into the zoning, um, that currently applies to the property and what is being proposed, uh, the existing resource area zoning provides for a wide range of rural uses and is typically applied to both privately-held rural parcels, um, as well as surveyed and unsurveyed crown parcels. Permitted uses include agriculture, natural resource extraction, outdoor recreation, and rural residential and compatible ancillary uses. As previously mentioned, the resource area zoning stipulates a minimum parcel size of 20 hectares and further regulates density based on parcel size. Um, currently, the property is permitted one principal dwelling unit and a maximum number, uh, and the maximum number of secondary suites or accessory dwellings permitted per parcel, um, to a maximum of one secondary suite permitted per parcel is dictated by parcel size, as mentioned. Um, so in this case, this parcel can currently have up to three dwelling units in the form of one principal dwelling and either two accessory dwellings or one accessory dwelling and one secondary suite. Now, while the resource area zone is much more rural in nature, the large holdings one zone generally provides for larger-scale rural residential uses with some agricultural and, uh, related ancillary allowances. The large holdings one zoning stipulates a minimum parcel size of four hectares. And similar to the resource area zoning, uh, it regulates minimum density based on parcel size. So the proposed nine-hectare large holdings one lot would allow for the same density that is currently allowed on the property under the resource area zoning. The small holdings three zone provides for smaller rural residential parcels with a primary use being, um, residential and then any residential ancillary and agricultural uses. Uh, the minimum parcel size required under the small holdings three zone is one hectare, and, um, it allows for a maximum density of up to two dwelling units in the form of one principal dwelling unit and either one accessory dwelling or one secondary suite. So comparatively, the property currently allows for up to three dwelling units, and the proposed subdivision, um, in its format, um, as presented, would facilitate the construction of up to seven dwelling units in total.
And I just want to clarify too, that, um, I mean, and this comes up frequently. People misunderstand what the purpose of the accessory dwelling provision is. It's not a density exchange that we've given you accessory dwellings as opposed to subdivision potential. The accessory dwelling provision is multifaceted. It could relate to provision for farm labor housing, uh, aging on place, uh, mortgage helper, or some other scenario, but it's not meant to be a swap-out for subdivision potential, which I think came up, um, during the earlier presentation.
Thanks, Chris. And then just speaking briefly about the development permit requirements, the property is located within an environmentally sensitive development permit and water course development permit area, um, with a majority of the property being in that ESDP area and a small portion of the property to the south, uh, being located in a water course development permit area. Some other relevant information, um, the subject property is located, uh, adjacent to, but outside of the Falder Community Water System. A service area petition to enter the water system was previously submitted by the applicant and refused by the board in 2021. And therefore, if the rezoning and subdivision were to be approved, the applicant must prove adequate water provision via an onsite well.
Sorry, I just want to jump in here too to make a point of clarification. So there was a comment made previously about, uh, this being infill development. And granted, when you look at this particular map here, you can see where potentially introduction of one-hectare parcels would be considered infill if looked at in relation to the water service area boundaries. But again, what, what is meant by the bylaw in terms of infill is commonly misunderstood or misapplied in relation to rezoning applications. Infill development is where, say, a resource area's owned parcel is 60 hectares and could be subdivided into three without a rezoning. That's infill. Uh, but as soon as you start changing the OCP designation, changing the zoning to introduce new density, that is not infill. That's an extension of an existing land use pattern. So we don't, we don't accept that this is an infill proposal.
And then just going into our analysis now. So as a part of reviewing applications to amend zoning and OCP designations to facilitate subdivision, our assessment would include reviewing the proposal against the applicable goals, objectives, and policies of the regional growth strategy or RGS, as well as the objectives and policies which would apply under the associated OCP bylaw. So just speaking about the regional growth strategy, uh, goal number one of the regional growth strategy is to focus development in serviced areas in designated primary and rural growth areas. And to this, it's noted that the property is not within a primary or rural growth area. Furthermore, the regional growth strategy directs development to settlement areas where services are located. And similarly, the growth management policies of the official community plan directs such development to rural growth areas and provides for some development in existing settlement areas where they're consistent with the official community plan. The regional growth strategy also discourages the rezoning of large rural land parcels to smaller sizes and limits consideration of such rezonings only where such growth is infill, as previously discussed, and does not significantly increase the number or, of units or established density and respects the character of its surroundings. So in this case, the proposal seeks to increase residential development through the rezoning of a larger rural parcel in order to facilitate the creation of smaller parcels outside of a designated growth area and would greatly expand the density po- potential of the land. While the regional growth strategy does provide for some infill development outside of growth areas, um, as Chris mentioned, this is typically limited to rezonings where an OCP amendment would not otherwise be needed. In this regard, the proposals not seem to be consistent with the regional growth strategy or growth management objectives of the OCP bylaw. Now, with respect to the OCP bylaw and as it relates to this proposal, the regional growth strategy does contain a policy which indicates that proposed developments that do not closely adhere to OCP guidelines for the protection of rural and resource areas will not be supported. The OCP bylaw contains a local area policy for the Falder Meadow Valley area, which is seen to capture this property, that states that the regional district board does not support the rezoning of parcels in order to facilitate subdivision, particularly within the Trout Community Watershed, such as this property, um, is located in, um, in order to maintain the existing parcel sizes and preserve existing water resources. This OCP policy is one of many which were recently adopted by the board as part of the Falder zoning review, and this proposal is seen to run contrary to the policy and direction set by the board as it seeks a rezoning to facilitate subdivision within the Trout Creek, uh, within the Trout Community Watershed. Additionally, as it relates to the broader applicable resource area policies, uh, the OC- within the OCP bylaw, we do note that these policies speak to generally maintaining resource area parcels as large land parcels in recognition that these areas will remain rural with limited to no community services and infrastructure. Additionally, and similar to, uh, the comments made previously, a new policy adopted by the regional district board as part of the Falder zoning review speaks to protecting the, the, uh, source water and water supply in the four designated community watersheds within the electoral area by discouraging rezoning of parcels in order to sub- um, in order to facilitate subdivision or increase density. And similar to the previously discussed local area policy, this proposal is seen to run contrary to the applicable resource area OCP policies. Now, the OCP bylaw, um, outlines various assessment criteria, uh, for proposals which involve the creation of any additional large holdings and small holdings parcels. This includes but isn't limited to, uh, the capability of the natural environment to support the proposal, the impact of the proposal on environmentally sensitive areas, as well as the capability of accommodating onsite domestic water and sewage disposal. And as John mentioned, uh, an environmental assessment has been submitted, which does indicate that the property supports, um, what's called ESA two lands, which constitute attribute-based, uh, critical habitat, local or provincially significant ecosystems which are uncommon and important to rare wildlife species. It was also indicated in the report that the property contains numerous wildlife trees and areas of coarse woody debris, which are noted as providing key environmentally valuable resources for, uh, variety of wildlife and important habitat features which should be retained whenever possible, uh, respectively. The property notably contains areas of steep slopes of both, uh, 30 to 40% and greater than 40%. And then as it relates to onsite domestic water and sewage disposal, it's noted that the proposed lots would be serviced by onsite wells and septic systems. And as mentioned, a groundwater supply investigation report, uh, was submitted in support of the application. Um, that being said, there should be consideration made to the cumulative impacts of placing continued stressors, uh, in this case being additional residential development on a community with known water resourcing issues. So in this regard, we do support applying the precautionary principle, uh, with respect to the application. So in summary, the proposal is not seen to be consistent with the regional growth strategy uh, or the applicable policies of the Electoral Area F OCP bylaw. Furthermore, the need for the proposed subdivision in the context of the Falder community has not been made clear nor has its alignment with the objectives of the OCP bylaw, particularly as it seeks to change the land use designation of a property, um, to facilitate subdivision outside of a growth area and within the Trout Community Watershed, more specifically within the Falder Meadow Valley area, which is known to have water resourcing issues. And lastly, we do know that the property owner has other options available, namely to sell the property and acquire lands more suited to their needs or intentions, or to retain the parcel and construct accessory dwellings as is currently permitted under the applicable, uh, resource area zoning. And for these reasons, we are not supportive of the proposal and support the maintenance of the current resource area designation of the parcel. And that's the end of my presentation, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh. Lorna, do you have anything to add or discuss or questions?
Okay, I hope I'm on. Um, I, I really don't have any more information to add. I want to say that I really appreciate the amount of work you've gone to at this, um, at this level, getting the, um, uh, experts to come in and talk about it and present your case for you. I, I, I am going to say that, that I, um, think that the application at this point in time should be denied. And my reasoning behind it is not because I don't think you should ever be able to develop this property, but what I think needs to happen is that the residents in your part of the, uh, valley that are currently outside of the, the development area, I believe that you should all gather together and petition the RDOS to properly or to change the, um, the current decision so that other people are also allowed to, uh, to do the same, um, uh, subdivisions that they'd like on their properties. Uh, I've only been on the council for a very short time, and it, it seems like other people keep coming forward the same way, that we are the only ones, nobody else wants to change this property, um, and so we would like a variance. And it seems like a lot of people want a variance. So I think what needs to happen is that, that a new look needs to be taken at this area. I believe it gets, goes under review every few years. So using the information you've already gathered from the people that have supported you and then move forward with your neighbors, perhaps you can have a formal change to it, and that would solve the problems that you're facing now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Amanda, do you have anything to add?
Um, I don't think I have anything to add. I just had a question about the associate engineering water study that was, uh, referred to. Were you guys referring to John? Were you referring to the, the 2010 study or the new 2022 study that came out?
All of John's report, uh, was based off of the most recent, Amanda. The, uh, it was released August of 2022.
Okay, because I'm just seeing on page 48, it's saying that it does, that that aquifer that you guys are talking about in the bedwalk does feed into the Meadow Valley aquifer. And then on 47, it clearly states that they recommend no more subdivisions in that area.
So if you turn to, um, sorry, I don't have the report in front of me. I can pull it up in front of me, though. There is a, a, a section of that report. Sorry, just give me one second here. Um, it, that breaks the aquifer up into four distinct sections. Where the property is located insofar as the boundary of, of that aquifer, and, and granted, we are not within, uh, Aquifer 299, we're within Aquifer 300. Um, the, the Coles notes and recommendation from Associated Environmental State that the aquifer where we're located is likely not fully allocated for individual domestic wells. And that was the recommendation that they'd made to planning that no, um, that the Falder Community Wells will not be impacted by groundwater use in the North Falder Aquifer. So, um, it also states in their report that there's no need to limit domestic use in the Trout Creek Sub-Aquifer Region, which is where our property is bordering. So, but like I said, we've, we've, we've taken a very deep look at this. And John, I'm not sure if there's anything that you'd like to add from a professional engineer perspective.
I think the only other comment I could make is just that it seems to me, uh, in my professional opinion, that the water shortage in the area has, has been somewhat fabricated. Uh, I don't know why. Uh, there's no evidence to suggest that there's a shortage at this point in time. Uh, the shortage was dealt with back in, in, uh, in 2010 by putting in another, uh, another deeper well, which, which solved the problem of, of the drawdown. And associated a sign-off saying that, that, uh, that that should suffice going forward. Um, once again, I think we're confusing things by bringing these two things together. We're in two separate aquifers. Um, and really, we're talking about some domestic use, which is a very, very small impact compared, compared to a community of Falder, which is using, you know, thousands of gallons a day to, to support their community. And yet we're now holding someone off based on a, on a fabricated water shortage? I, I, I disagree.
Did that answer your question, Amanda?
Um, yeah, slightly, I think. Um, I don't think I have any more questions. I'm going to agree with Lorna and the RDOS on this, though, and put forward that I don't recommend that the bylaw rezoning be passed.
So your, which, what was your recommendation again?
I, I am in agreeance with RDOS in that it does not get put through to be passed.
Thank you. So I think the question before us is, is should we approve, uh, this, uh, application? Or, um, agree with the staff report that it should not be approved? Uh, what is your? Uh, what is your comment on that, Amanda?
I agree with the staff that it not be approved.
You agree with approving which one?
Sorry, I agree with the RDOS staff in that the application put forward does not get approved.
Thank you. And, uh, Lorna?
I agree that the application should not be approved at this time.
Thank you. Uh, I also agree that it shouldn't be approved at this time. So, I think we're going to move that we adopt the recommendations of the staff and recommend to the board for consideration.
And we'll need to have a vote for that motion.
Uh, all in favor, say yes. Amanda?
Sorry, I'm confused. All in favor of us not putting...
All in favor of us, uh, the, uh, recommendation of staff not to approve this. Yes.
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 And, Lorna?
Yes.
Yes.
And my vote is yes as well. So, thank you, everyone, for coming. Uh, I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 1:08.